I'm Ben Vereen, and you're watching CITV. CI-TV.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the annual reorganization meeting of the Colonial Board of School Directors. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Flag.
...of the United States of America-
And to the Republic for which it stands-
One nation, under God-
Indesible with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin this meeting, the record will show that we currently have five seated board members. They are Mel Brodsky, Leslie Feingold, Susan Moore, Kathy Paduzzi, and Felix Ramondo. Also, we have in attendance four individuals recently elected to the board to be sworn in this evening. They are Jennifer Dow, Eunice Franklin Becker, Rosemary Northcutt, and Adam Shupack. The purpose of this meeting is reorganization. The Pennsylvania school code stipulates that all public schools must meet annually during the first week in December to reorganize. The code requires that during this meeting, the board must elect a temporary president to chair the meeting, certify the election of the new members, administer the oath of office to the new members, and elect a permanent president and vice president to serve one year terms. At this time, we would invite public comments on any items on the agenda. Comments of a general nature will be served at the end of the meeting. Then at this time, I would ask for a nomination from a temporary president from our five seated board members. Nominations do not need to be seconded.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Kathy Paduzzi to be the temporary chair.
Hearing no other nominations, nominations are closed. All in favor of Mrs. Paduzzi-
There will need to be a motion to close.
Pardon me?
There needs to be a motion to close.
Can I have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
And a second.
A second. All in favor of closing the motions? And all in favor of Mrs. Paduzzi as the temporary chair? From our seated board members? Thank you. Mrs. Paduzzi, it's your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Now is a very exciting time. I'd like to invite Judge Carolyn Nichols to come up to the podium, where she will administer the oath to our four newly-elected school board members. So if you guys want to make your way over to the podium... If you can do it one at a time, that's fine, too. Okay?
It's a good evening. I'm Judge Carolyn Nichols from the neighboring county of Philadelphia, but Go Panthers! I'm an Overbrook grad here, so I feel right at home in Montgomery County. So we're going to start with newly-elected school district director Jennifer Dow. Are you ready to take the oath? Do you want to use a Bible or not?
Sure.
Okay. You want somebody to hold, somebody in family? To hold? Someone in your family? Raise her right hand. Put her hand, there you go, together. That's right. All right. Repeat after me. "I, Jennifer Dow-"
"I, Jennifer Dow."
Say it nice and loud. "Do solemnly swear or affirm-"
"Do solemnly swear or affirm-"
"-that I will support, obey, and defend-"
"That I will support, obey, and defend-"
"-the Constitution of the United States-"
"The Constitution of the United States-"
"-and the Constitution of this Commonwealth-"
"And the Constitution of this Commonwealth."
"-and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
"And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. All right. We're now ready for... Is this in order? Eunice Franklin Becker, isn't it? Okay. Eunice Franklin Becker? Do you want to use a Bible or not? Okay. You're designated. All right. All right. "I, Eunice Franklin Becker-"
"I, Eunice Franklin Becker-"
"-do solemnly swear or affirm-"
"Do solemnly swear."
"-that I will support, obey, and defend-"
"That I will support, obey, and defend-"
"-the Constitution of the United States-"
"The Constitution of the United States."
"-and the Constitution of this Commonwealth-"
"And the Constitution of this Commonwealth."
"-and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
"And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations. Next, we have Northcutt, right?
Yes.
Okay. Use a Bible? Okay. Family member? Come over this way. All right. Repeat after me. "I, Rosemary Northcutt-"
"I, Rosemary Northcutt."
"-do solemnly swear or affirm-"
"Do solemnly swear."
"-that I will support, obey, and defend-"
"That I will support, obey, and defend."
"-the Constitution of the United States-"
"The Constitution of the United States."
"-and the Constitution of this Commonwealth-"
"And the Constitution of this Commonwealth."
"-and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
"And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
All right. Congratulations. Finally, Mr. Shupack.
Yes.
Family?
Yes. They're causing a ruckus.
That's okay. That's all right. That's what this is all about. Do you want to hold the Bible for Dad?
I wish I had a special Bible.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll put that down.
You want to hold that?
You want to hold that for Dad?
Uh-uh, you've got to hold it up.
You've got to hold it up.
Hold it up. Hold it up.
Ready?
Okay, you're ready? Yeah, you can do it, too. Come on.
You can do it, too.
Okay. "I, Adam Shupack-"
"I, Adam Shupack-"
"-do solemnly swear or affirm-"
"Do solemnly swear."
"-that I will support, obey, and defend-"
"That I will support, obey, and defend-"
"-the Constitution of the United States-"
"The Constitution of the United States."
"-and the Constitution of this Commonwealth-"
"And the Constitution of this Commonwealth."
"-and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
"And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity."
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Free, do I need you to take your thing again?
Oh, thank you.
Do your thing, so I can take a picture. Thanks.
There you go. Oops. Let me put this over.
I just want to thank Judge Nichols for coming and for doing that. It really does make it feel all that much more real when you get to stand there in front of a judge, a judge, and in front of all of your friends and family and say that oath. We've all done it, and I'm sure we would all agree that it really is a special feeling. And congratulations to the four of you. Campaigning's not easy. Raising your hand to agree to campaign is the hardest decision to make for so many people, so I'm just excited that you're on board and looking forward to working with you. So I'm just going to be obnoxious then and ask for a big round of applause for our awful- Okay, so I'm reading my little list here that Mr. Sherman gave me, my cheat sheet of how to proceed. And right now is when I'm going to ask for any nominations for board president for this upcoming year. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to make a nomination. I, Ms. President, I'd like to nominate Felix Ramondo to be president of our board. Felix has a long and distinguished record of service to our community. As a member of our school board, Felix chairs the finance committee, helping to deliver fiscally responsible leadership while maintaining our high academic standards. He has also served as chair of the Borough of Conshohocken Authority and on the Planning Commission and is a youth sports coach. He and his wife Dorothy have four children, two of whom have graduated from Colonial District and two of whom are still in the schools. In addition to holding a degree in economics from Temple University, Felix is a member of IBEW and a... is a member of that union. But most importantly, I want to say that Felix, I know him to be an enthusiastic, dedicated, and very hard-working and capable member of our board. And I want to offer my congratulations, and I want to... I'd like to nominate him for president. I'm very, very proud to do so.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I have a nomination. Over the course of the last few years, our district has been transformed from a very good school district to an elite school district. We have multiple blue-ribbon schools. We are constantly applauded by local, state, and national publications. And any real estatee will tell you that the reasons our homes have appreciated so much is because of the excellence of the schools. Our facilities are state-of-the-art. On Wednesday, the governor will be here at our middle school to celebrate our STEAM program, which is just one of many curricular and scheduling initiatives that have been implemented over the last couple of years. We have successfully negotiated mutually advantageous union contracts that will take us, the labor piece, well into the next decade. And financially, we're still the third lowest school district in the county as far as tax knowledge, and one of only seven school districts in the entire state that has the top bond rating that you can get. We have an atmosphere where all nine voices are heard and respected, and where all decisions are finally made, always considering the welfare of our students, our community, our parents, our staff. These have been amazing accomplishments, and I think what we need right now, especially with all the administrative changes that are occurring, is a leadership that is clear and steady, a person who knows where we are going, because she certainly knows where we've been, so therefore I nominate Mrs. Susan Moore for reelection as president.
Are there any other nominations for president? Okay, if there's no more nominations, the nominations are closed.
No motion. We need a motion to close.
I'd like to have a mo... Come on, Dave. Can I please have a motion to close the nominations? Can I have a second? Can't hurt to have a second. All right. All those in favor to close the nominations. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's any board comment before we vote. Does anybody have anything to say?
I would like to say something. I want to thank Mel. I am humbled to have you nominate me. It's been an honor to serve as president of the board, especially in a place that has been a big part of my life for many years, or way more years than I'd like to admit. I truly love Colonial School District. I grew up here, chose to raise my children here, and now have grandchildren that will be going here as well. Since giving up my career as a special ed teacher to be a full-time mom, I've spent a great deal of my time volunteering to help Colonial School District grow, thrive, and be the best it can be for the kids and for the community. Whether it was as vice president of the PTOs at Plymouth Elementary, Colonial Elementary, Colonial Middle School, and Plymouth White Marsh High School, or as a Colonial School Board Director for 16 years, including the past three as president, I've been involved in the district. With all the wonderful achievements the Colonial School District has made, as well as the successful transition to a new superintendent, the hiring of a new athletic director, and a new finance director, all within the last four months, it is my hope that we can work together as a board of 10 to continue in the same positive direction. Colonial School District has more than 700 employees and over 5,000 students. After all this time volunteering and being on the board, there's still a lot that I can learn. I remind all the board that in the end, we are all only one vote. I hope each of you will take the time to learn and take seriously the confidence that the voters have placed in you, and make all future decisions based on what is truly best for all the stakeholders of Colonial School District. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Now I should ask for the votes?
That's correct. That's correct. We will engage in balloting. You express the name of the person you will be voting for, for president for the next year.
Okay. How should we... Should we start down, down this way? Or is it all those in favor?
No, no, because there's two-
It's roll call.
Yeah, it's roll call.
Roll call? Okay. I'm going to start, and we'll just go down this way, if that's okay? Okay. I would like to vote for Sue Moore.
I vote for Susan Moore.
I vote for myself, for Susan Moore.
I vote for Felix Ramondo.
I vote for myself, Felix Ramondo.
I vote for 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 Felix Ramondo.
Okay, so congratulations to Mr. Ramondo. He is our next board president. And now, once a president is elected, they may run the rest of the meeting.
I just want to say that I'm honored, and I look forward to working with everyone on this board to fulfill our mission of providing the best possible education we can for our children. But first, I would like to acknowledge Sue Moore and her commitment and dedication on serving on this board as our first woman president. Under her stewardship, our school district has made notable achievements, and for that, we owe her a debt of gratitude. I'm looking forward to working with our superintendent, administration, principals, and teachers as we continue to create a caring and nurturing environment at which all of our children have the opportunity to reach their full potential. And for that, I say thank you. Moving on to our next order of business, we have a vice president to vote on. And going to the cheat sheet, do I hear nominations for the position of vice president?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Leslie Feingold for vice president of our board. Ms. Feingold has served on our board with distinction for the past six years. She currently chairs the curriculum committee and previously chaired the safety and wellness committee. Leslie also represents our district on the Montgomery County... Board of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, where she serves as secretary. Prior to her service on the board, Leslie volunteered on the district's technology review committee, strategic planning committee, and ADL's No Place For Hate Task Force. She holds degrees from Carnegie Mellon and the University of Pittsburgh. She is a passionate and committed advocate for public education, and she and her husband Stan are parents of a Colonial graduate.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to close nominations? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Ayes? Nays? Ayes have it. We go with a roll call vote? Is that correct, Jeff? Or just...
Since there's... Since there's only one nomination, we do not need to do a roll call vote. It could just be simply a voice vote.
So we have one nomination, all in favor of vice president, Leslie Feingold. Please say aye. Nays? Ayes have it. All right. Moving on to our...
No, that's fine. That's all I want to say.
Good?
I'm very honored. Thank you all.
Okay. And our next item of business would be... Jumping back to our agenda. Resolution to authorize continuation of existing signature plates. It is recommended that a resolution is made to authorize the continuation of the use of existing signature plates until new signature plates can be prepared reflecting the new board officer appointments, if necessary. The financial manager is authorized to arrange for the preparation of said signature plates so the intent of this resolution can be effectuated, if necessary. So do I hear that in the form of a motion? Motion? Do we have a second? Second? All in favor, say aye. Ayes? Nays? Ayes have it. All right. Is there any other business to be presented in front of the board tonight?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the board amend the agenda for this meeting to include the following motion. One, that Dr. Christian post a request for proposals for general legal services on the school district website by the close of business on Tuesday, December 5, 2017, that will include questions that will be provided by the board president and vice president. Two, that any board member who wishes to propose any questions for inclusion in the RFP forward their questions to the board president and board vice president by noon tomorrow, and that the board president and vice president collectively decide whether to include those questions. Three, that Dr. Christian instruct respondents to the RFP to have their responses to the questions returned to the district electronically by 3:00 p.m. on Monday, December 11, 2017, and that Dr. Christian distribute the responses to the board immediately upon receipt. And finally, four, that a special meeting be scheduled for December 13, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the board meeting room for the purpose of considering and selecting a solicitor, and the administration take the necessary steps to advertise that meeting.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I second that motion.
All right, we have two motions on the floor right now. The first motion would be to amend the agenda for tonight. So do I hear...
Do we have a discussion? Is there a board... Opportunity for board discussion?
Absolutely. Is there a discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, please. So I do recall at a couple of meetings over the last couple of years that we would express concern over amending agenda when we didn't have time to review, discuss, do research on what we were actually voting on. And Mr. Ramondo, you were somebody who was very adamant about having that knowledge in advance of making these votes. So with that being said, I look forward to putting out an RFP and doing our due diligence in finding or either maintaining our solicitor or finding a new one. But I just don't feel like I'm prepared. I don't know if I can make it on those meeting dates. Scheduling special meetings, generally, we take a roll call and see who can make those meetings. So I would appreciate it if we could table this and come back to it at a time when we can have that information in front of us.
Are you making a motion to table?
I would like to make a motion to table amending the agenda.
All right, so we have a motion to table. Is there a second? All right.
I'd also like to make a comment. Is that now, or do we vote on the motions first?
Before you vote on this, there needs to be public comment, because this is not on the agenda under the Sunshine Act.
I would also like to make a... Obviously, some people sitting here tonight knew that this was going to happen. Others of us did not, and therefore had no opportunity to be prepared or to have any input into this decision. And therefore, I strongly follow Kathy's lead in asking that this be tabled.
All right, so we have a motion on the table at the moment, and do I hear a motion and discussion?
Public comment. If there's any... If there's anybody in public that wants to comment would have an opportunity to do so.
We have an opportunity for public comment.
Please state your name and township of residence.
Deanna Duranty, White Marsh Township. I'm also a news reporter for NBC 10 News, and I reached out to all of you over the Thanksgiving weekend, some of you multiple times. As you will recall, on social media over Thanksgiving weekend, there was a posting about this very issue, about a meeting that was supposed to take place off school property having to do with selecting a new solicitor at the Plymouth Township Building, I believe. Is that where you had it scheduled? And I followed up with a number of email questions to all of you. For those of the new board members, I posted it on social media, hoping that you would respond to my questions as well. And very few of you did respond to me as a news reporter and also as a parent of a student here at Colonial School District. The issue was the lack of transparency with this meeting. It seemed to have been done behind closed doors. If you can point me to minutes where that meeting was scheduled in an open meeting or where there's a record of this new solicitor selection that was supposed to have taken place before it was brought to the public on social media, I would like to see that. I'm also concerned with the fact that there appears to have been separate discussion here tonight. Eunice Franklin Baker, for you to bring this up this evening, what transpired? What made you bring this up this evening to have this as an amendment to the agenda?
This is an opportunity for public comment, so you can make your comment. Questions and answers can be taken at a different time, but feel free to make your comment and...
My comments to everyone. I don't know that I've ever seen a school board meeting so well-attended before, especially a reorganization meeting. I believe that that shows that there's some concern here by everyone here, perhaps? I don't know. So I'm... This is my public comment, then you have a very large audience here paying attention. Is there anything any of you want to say to these people who clearly are concerned by the first secret meeting and then apparently this side discussion that happened? There is nothing any of you want to say?
I would also like to say that there is a very, very carefully-written board policy as to how this happens. This is not following that board policy. Any change in board policy should have two reads at a public meeting. As evidenced by the three of us, this is news to us right now. And so that breaks board policy, and for that reason, I also object to doing it in this manner.
All of this seems very sketchy, bad politics. Also, since it's public comment and I can't ask questions, I will tell you, I've done research. I've contacted numerous superintendents around the state of Pennsylvania and other school board members as well, who tell me that the Plymouth Township scheduled meeting for the secret interviews is very, very unusual to have happened. I know you can't comment. You can't comment.
I appreciate your comments.
But I can make the comment that other people are telling me that the actions of this board is very unusual.
Any new comments that you want to make at this point? If not, then we appreciate your opportunity.
I will leave the floor open to other people.
Great.
I'm Lynda Doll. I don't know that a lot of you know. I'm like the only parent that ever shows up or community member to all the committee meetings, and I appreciate everybody here. And I have to say, I'm very disappointed what I'm seeing here, because in the past, I don't even know what party any of these people are, because they always vote for the children. They discuss with the children. They're always very respectful of each other, and that's how they handle everything. And what I'm seeing here right now doesn't seem like it's going that way. I don't know what's actually being voted on. I haven't heard this at one of the committee meetings. I feel that that's where it should... It always starts at a committee meeting, and then it moves on to the school board meeting. It's not following that proper procedure. And the fact that this was read like somebody dictated it to her, that she didn't just come up with it on her own, I just don't feel this is following the spirit of what the school district has been doing, in my opinion, all these years when I sit in these public meetings. It's been great. They all work together, and now there's this tension, and I'm not liking what I'm seeing.
I'm actually shaking. I'm sorry. My name is Chris Epstein, and I have been a parent with students in the Colonial District for the last 19 years. I also still have children in the district. I have three at the high school and one at the middle school, so I will be a peer for a very long time. And I have to say, I am a... Not a political person. Like, I do my due diligence and I vote, but I have never gotten involved- Like, I do my due diligence and I vote, but I have never gotten involved in politics because some ugly things can come out of it. And I just want to say, within 19 years that I've been here, now, I haven't, like Linda Dahl, I have not been to all the board meetings because, having said, having six children, it's not always easy to get to all the meetings. And I'm disappointed. I am very discouraged. We have a brand-new superintendent who has nothing but the best interest of the students of this district in mind. He has, I've come, I come to all the parent council meetings, which are now called community coffee hour meetings. I have been supportive of the different schools, you know, members of the PTO. I'm sorry, I'm so upset. What I'm upset about is the fact that there seems to be such discord amongst the people that are representing us and our students. You are to have the best interest of our children in mind, not the best interest for your ego, not the best interest because you want to look good. This is totally not what I'm about. I'm about supporting these children. I have special needs kids as well. I have kids in an Ivy League school. We're all over the place. And I have nothing but gratitude for the board members over the last 19 years, many of them who are not even here now. And I'm just so disappointed and disgusted that people will come in, possibly, it seems like with their own agenda, and railroad all of the work that has gone in to the last, at least 19 years that I've been here. And I've seen some amazing changes in our schools, amazing. I can't even begin to tell you. I have been nothing but a proponent of this school district, but I am really shocked and dismayed. I don't even know the new people. I voted based on what I saw in their resumes. They have special ed students. They have, you know, they want to bring their best. They want to show off even more so from what our board has done. And this is not the way to do that, absolutely not. I am very, very, very disappointed to see this behavior behind the scenes, you know? There are protocols in place that I don't know anything about that, obviously, Deanna Duranty has made known to the people here. You guys have expressed it tonight. I am just going to move forward and ask that you please, whatever you have in your minds right now that you came to this meeting with, erase it. Erase it. Have a do-over. Start over. Get to know these board members who have been putting their families on the side table at some points to do things for this district. Get to know us. Get to know me. I've never seen you, and I have been around four different schools 19 years. And I guarantee you, there are teachers here that have seen my face in the hall, and they know exactly how passionate I am. And I really want to see you guys move forward, get to know each other, put your, whether you're Democrat, Republican, independent, liberal, whatever, put that behind our children. That's not fair for them. That is not fair for them.
I appreciate your comment, and there may be some other people that want to speak, so I may ask that we give opportunity to all.
I'm Greg Stokes in White Marsh Township. I wish somebody would tell me what just happened here in the last 10 minutes because, last I checked, we had a blue ribbon school that my daughter goes to. We have an excellent school district. We have some of the lowest taxes in the area. We have home values that are skyrocketing. We have people who are moving in to one-bedroom apartments so their kids can go to school here. And in a matter of 10 minutes, 10 minutes, a brand-new school board comes in and displaces a president who served this school district since the day she was born. What did Sue Moore do to deserve to be displaced here tonight? And I say that knowing Sue personally and professionally. I don't always agree with her politics or her decisions, but I know that she and the school board that preceded this board made the best decisions, not for themselves, not for their political party, but for the kids, for the residents, for the parents, in a matter of 10 minutes that was tossed aside. And I'd like to know why. And now, to come here, a brand-new school board, a new school board member brings a motion after being sworn in 10 minutes earlier, a motion to displace a solicitor who served this school district for years?
Greg, I'm going to correct you on that. It wasn't a motion to displace him. It was a motion to put out an RFP.
Okay. A motion to put up RFP.
So, I'm going to tell you, there's some other people that want to speak and...
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
So, there's a couple of repeats going on right there.
I'm sorry. I'll absolutely wrap it up.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. Thank you.
We have an RFP out for a new solicitor. What did the solicitor do wrong? Who is the new solicitor who's going to be considered? I'd like to know. Do you have anybody in mind? And when did these discussions take place? Is it a new school board member shows up and five minutes after being sworn in, all of a sudden has an idea for an RFP?
Greg, there's a process, and if you have any questions specific to the process, we can obviously answer those questions.
I brought my daughter here tonight after basketball practice, and I am ashamed that I did so because what she saw here was disgusting, a disgusting display of personal agendas and politics.
Great. I appreciate your comment.
And I want to know why.
Thank you very much. There is a time limit policy. It's five minutes.
May I go?
State your name and address.
My name, my name is Stephen O'Malley, and I'm a high school student at Plymouth White Marsh High School, and I've been in this district for 11 years. And I am sitting in this meeting as a part of my government class that I'm taking as a senior in high school. And what I just witnessed from my seat was a clear agenda to swipe away all of the good work that people have put in over the last 10, 15 years that I've been in this district. There has been nothing wrong. Nothing wrong has been, and to come in, it seems so fake that you just knew, you knew coming in what was going to happen. Like, I sat in my seat, and I saw the four new board members sworn in, and they brought an agenda to the table, an agenda. Four new board members had an agenda before this meeting began. They were sworn in, and they knew what was going to happen. That is not how a school board works. I'm a 17-year-old kid who has realized now what just happened was terribly wrong. There are concerned parents here, and I feel for them because this is bad. I am shaking right now with emotion because what just went down, I did not expect from Colonial School District. That's the last thing I expect from a district like this. Blue ribbons, Ridge Park Blue Ribbon. I mean, you can just keep going on. It's Colonial Elementary School, one of the best fourth and fifth grade, you know, grades in the state. Plymouth White Marsh High School is the best high school in this area. And for a new agenda to come in and wipe all away what has built is disgusting.
Again, do you want to, there might be other people that want to speak. Do you want to, I hear some repeats going on, so if you want to wrap it up.
Because there's a reason for that. Like, there is a serious issue here.
Listen, I appreciate your comments.
I have been to one board meeting in my entire life, sir. I have been to one board meeting in my entire life, and I'm never coming back if this is what's going to keep happening. This is bad. This is a bad look, and you're getting told this from a 17-year-old child, that this is a bad look for a good district. This is not the direction this district should be going in after all the good work that has been put forth by past people.
Thank you.
My name is Dorothy Ramondo. Yes, I am Felix's wife. I also have four children in Colonial District. I've been in Montgomery County for over 20 years, and I'm very confused as to why there's so much dissension when nothing bad has happened. It's a wonderful school. That's why we all love it. Change is happening, but who said change is going to be bad? Change can be a wonderful thing. It's still going to be a wonderful school. Everyone here is dedicated to that matter, and I'm very confused as people coming up here saying as though the school's going to not be a blue ribbon anymore. What's the evidence in that? Just because there's a new president, I mean, that happens. They're all working together. And all we've heard is that the school's going down. There's not going to be a good school anymore. It's just not founded. It's unfounded, and it's ridiculous. The school is wonderful. I'm very proud of everyone on this board. Come on, sweetie.
My name's Brian Daley of Plymouth Township, and I've had three children who went all through the Colonial School District. I agree with Ms. Ramondo. It's not as if the work of the school board, which has been very, very good over the years, has been obliterated in the last 10 minutes. I think everyone should calm down and look to assess the situation. I think that, I'm not familiar with the goings-on about the RFP for the solicitor, but I'm confident that the board members will be able to work it out. And I also just think that we should try to keep on an even keel and let the board resolve its issues and do its work. Thank you.
Here are no other public comment. We'll go back to the business at order. We have a motion on the table, a motion to table this, this RFP. So, we'll go for a vote. All in favor of tabling the motion? Please say aye. Nays? All right. So, the tables did not pass. So, we'll go back to the motion of amending the agenda for tonight. So, show of hands who's in favor of the motion to...
Do we have a second?
Okay, so we have the motion. We have a second on the amending the agenda.
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I would just like to add my opinion that all of this has caught us by surprise. Change is a matter of life. Change happens, and we're always looking for new ideas and new perspectives. But I had no idea this motion was going to be made. It's certainly never been discussed in committees, never been discussed as a board, and I object to that. I also don't understand, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't understand how we void a contract in the middle of the contract. It's my understanding that we have this contract with our current solicitor until the end of June. Now, maybe someone can explain to me how we can just say, no, we don't want you anymore. Go away. I don't understand that.
I'd like to add that I have no issue with an RFP. Going out on an, for an RFP for solicitors, we have done it before in the past in order to be sure that we are getting a good value for the money spent and that we have the best representation possible. In my 16 years on the board, I've had nothing but respect, the utmost respect for Mr. Sultanic and the job he's done. That doesn't mean there aren't other solicitors that could also do a good job, and maybe there's some of them that would do it for less money. I don't know. That's what an RFP is for. But I believe that that RFP should take place as part of our normal board business, and that would happen in March or April. We would go out to RFP. We would then interview people, and it would all be very public, and the whole board would know about it. And then, we would either retain our solicitor come July 1st, or we'd appoint a new one come July 1st. I don't understand the rush. I don't understand the secrecy, and I can't possibly support this.
For clarification, Mel, the solicitor serves, is it at-will employee? So, just, there's no contract associated with that. Okay, so we have a motion on the table, and we're going to...
There is a contract.
We're not going to get into details on what at-will means, but so let's go ahead and vote on...
I need clarification since I was directed to do some things on this motion. I need some clarification on the timing of it.
Sure.
Could you, could you review the timing? It was a posting going up tomorrow and closing when?
Closing on... Monday. Closing on the 11th at 3:00 PM, Monday, the 11th.
Okay. Is there a number of solic firms that you would like me to contact? Usually with an RFP, we cast a wide net so we get enough competition and so we get...
That is correct.
That's right.
Okay. So, there's not a number, but just cast a wide net?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, there was a portion in there about collecting questions?
Yes. You'll have them tomorrow morning, and we're also accepting additional questions that could be presented by tomorrow.
So, our questions have to be to you by tomorrow morning?
By noon.
Or by noon tomorrow.
And then, it closes on the 11th with the intent of having a special meeting on the 13th?
That is correct. And we can review all this, we can review the motion with you at the end of the meeting if there's some particular details that you want to get clarification on.
I would like a little clarification if Dr. Christian's done. So, any, any questions that the board runs home tonight and quick throws together because we have no notice and get to you by tomorrow at noon, you two will decide which of those questions are asked? Is that the way this is going down?
We'll see if there's redundant questions, if there's something that could be added.
So, if I ask a question and it's not redundant, it will be asked? Or do you have editorial power over which questions are asked? Upon review.
All right. So, we have a motion to...
We still comment. I was going to say this earlier, and I didn't because I was hoping I didn't have to. I was lucky enough to have been elected to the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors six years ago and served a four-year term there. And the evening of this, of being sworn in, which was just like for you guys tonight, the first time you take an oath, I was very nervous. I was very, just nervous, naive. And I remember coming out to the dais, and a fellow supervisor, this was after the meeting actually, while we were on the dais, said, you know, be careful about that lady, that lady in the back. She's like a really hardcore Republican. Just be careful. And we came down, we took photos with my family, and my kids were there, and I happened to meet with this woman. And I extend my hand to her. She introduces herself, and she says, I just asked for one thing. She said, don't be a pawn. And I have taken that crazy Republican lady's advice to heart since that day. I will not be a pawn. I will, for as long as I am elected to any position that I hold, I will make decisions based on what I think is right, not because someone advised me to. I will take advice and make my own decisions. So, to the four new school board members who I sincerely meant everything I said earlier, that I am super excited to serve with you, I am very nervous that you are being pawns, and I encourage you to take as much ownership in the decisions that you make and have the nerve to be an individual. Thank you.
I would just like to say, in response to that, that I'm no one's pawn, and I'm actually, frankly, offended that you would suggest that at the first meeting that I'm at, that somehow I don't take to heart the school district. My kids were here earlier. I have a four-year-old and a one-year-old. People may have differing opinions, may have differing perspectives and point of views, but it's really not fair to accuse somebody of being a pawn.
Wait, wait. Can I make a point? Second, second of all, I would just like to say that, just getting back to the issue of questions, we already have questions from Sue, from Mel. They already took an opportunity to submit them. You know, a meeting was referred to that was scheduled to take place to do some fact-finding and sit down with some candidates in November, the end of November. It unfortunately did not take place, but we did get questions. So, this is not coming out of left field, and nobody is surprised here. The next point I would just like to make is that, you know, certainly, we have no, this is not meant ill towards our current solicitor in any way, you know, but we feel like it's important to go out to the marketplace and to see if we're getting the best, the best value, the best service. It's a competition, and just like people have to compete day in, day out at their, you know, at their jobs and their professions, that's what this is, we have a right as a board to go out into the marketplace. And, you know, I would expect that Mr. Sultanic would, you know, will participate in the process. No decision has been made, and, you know, we don't have any responses yet. So, we haven't looked over anything. Nothing's been decided in secret. This is a public... This is a public meeting. You see, people have expressed their comment, their emotions, and their feelings about it, and we hear you. We're listening, and we're going to make the best decision we can for the students, the families, and for this district. We live here too. We send our kids to the schools too. And so the notion that somehow we're not taking to heart the, you know, the kids, the students, and what's best for them, it really does, does offend me.
I'd like to add to, respectfully, Adam, yes, we did submit questions when we thought there was an interview because we were called and told there would be an interview. We had no participation in making that decision. We had no idea it was going to be brought up again this evening. I don't understand if this is all open and honest, why we were not all included in the conversation. And I, I still don't understand why the rush, and I don't understand why Mr. Sultanic has been singled out. We have lots of other people that we contract with. We have a special ed attorney that we use all the time. We have other services. Why is this the only one that's important enough that we have to do this this evening on the reorganization night? I just don't, it makes no sense to me whatsoever.
I'm going to call the question. I think there's been ample time for discussion and questions. So we have a motion on the table.
Wait, I would like to.
Do I have a motion to end discussion? A motion to end discussion. Here, a second.
Is there such a thing?
All in favor of ending discussion, say aye.
We were not even allowed to speak anymore.
You were allowed to speak, Mel. Everybody's had ample time for this discussion. This isn't out of left field.
Yeah, this is out of left field.
All right, well, we made a motion to end discussion. We have an amendment on the table to, a motion on the table to amend the agenda. All in favor of amending the agenda for the purpose of adding the RFP motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
Nay.
Six, three. All right, for the motion of authorizing our superintendent to issue an RFP for the purpose of solicitor services, all in favor of, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Ayes have it. Six, three. Okay. Now, time to move on. Our last order of business is to, for questions or comments from the floor.
Just a few comments here in a statement. Bob Sluggel, President of the Colonial Education Association. I'm joined by Jill Foster and Beth Miller, our association vice presidents, along with our members, some of whom are here tonight. There has, and I think I can say this fairly, there's been significant interest and genuine curiosity, a real level of anticipation about this reorganization. We have, we have been able, over time, to foster productive dialogue. We have built trust. We have our schools and our students as a top priority. We hope to continue all of that and more. With that said, please know, we remain very approachable, and that we sincerely thank all of you for serving.
Deanna Durante, White Marsh Township, again. I've heard a lot from parents here, and I'm not sure if this is the point when I can ask questions of you. I think some of the concern I'm hearing from parents here is that you feel schools are going down, we're going to lose our blue ribbon. I don't think that's what people here are trying to say so much as that they feel that, again, there were things done in secret. For a brand-new board member to come up with that perfectly-written agenda adjustment seems odd. It seems like there was discussion before this meeting about what she was going to come up and ask, about what was going to happen here. And I think that's some of the concern that we're hearing from people here, that there was some sort of discussion. You don't like the word "secret," but not in public. And I see Ms. Finegold nodding in agreement when things are said. It gives me concern as someone that thinks that this was all decided before you came here tonight. Do you deny that? Do you deny that any of you had this discussion?
We appreciate your feelings, but nothing was done in secret. This is a public meeting, so.
Mr. President, I ask the new board members if they deny this.
I'm taking the privilege of answering the question.
So you know what they knew before they got here tonight?
This is a public meeting. Again, I cannot, I don't know where, how you feel, or you express your feelings, but they are feelings. So, there any other additional comment?
Again, I'm coming to you as a concerned parent. I have three questions. One is, because I don't understand protocol, okay, so these are questions. Is it common for a motion to be made with specific timelines and expectations of other people in their response to it? For example, Mr. Christian.
Yes.
Dr. Christian.
It is, it is commenting, yes.
Excuse me, I didn't finish. There seemed to have been no discussion on the timing. It was, here I am as a parent, looking at the school superintendent, asking, "He has minutes, or hours, or days to respond?" This man has a plate that is full of things that he needs to be doing for our 5,000 students. And I really can't understand how you can dictate to him the short amount of time he has to respond. Now, he hasn't even questioned that. It's not, this is just my question, okay? My other question is, it was brought up that proper protocol may not have been followed. Now, whether it has or it hasn't, if proper protocol has not been followed, how can you continue to make votes on a motion that may not even be legitimate because proper protocol may not have been followed? And my third question is, how can any member of the board shut down questions and comments because you don't like what you're hearing? This is open for discussion. We have pros and cons. We have, you know, I, I have kids. I don't always like what they have to say, but I try to hear them out. They don't like what I have to say, but I make them hear me out. So I really don't appreciate the fact that people that are here that care about our kids are being shut down because you've heard enough. You don't like what you're hearing. And with that, I say goodnight.
Stephen O'Malley, concerned high school student. So from, again, from my point of view, when you have a meeting of six people, whether you're talking about, you know, your neighbor's cat, or, you know, futures of a school board, or the direction of which the school board should go, that from, you know, an outsider's point of view, as Deanna Durante said, seems sketchy, to say the least. Because decisions should not be made behind closed doors when the best interest should not be, should we pass this, or should this agenda be pushed forward? How about the 5,000 kids that you're supposed to be representing? Because right now, there seems like there's agendas that are put in place for personal reasons and not benefit of the community reasons. I, not calling, I'm not calling you out, excuse me, sorry, not calling you out, like, you know, integrity-wise, I'm just saying that from my point of view, there should be, you know, no secretive or meetings that are not all board members are in attendance of when it's deciding the future, you know, of a school district. That's just what I feel from a student's point of view.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment, and thanks for getting up. I know it's not easy, and I know when I was 17, I probably would not have been able to do it. So, thank you for doing it. I just want to say just a couple things to address some of the concerns that were raised. First of all, we, you know, the, you know, those of us who are new board members did talk about whether it made sense to go ahead with an RFP, as we have every right to do. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. This is a public meeting. It's put on the agenda to public meeting. We've heard public comment. It's been voted on, and that's how this board functions. When decisions are made at public meetings with input from the community, and the vote may go, you know, the way people like sometimes, the way people don't like other times, but that's how decisions are made. Secondly, the decision to issue an RFP is not a decision about who ultimately, about the outcome of that process. I think a lot of the concern I've heard, or some of the concern I've heard, is that somehow we, you know, we've made a decision, we've made a decision about the outcome outside of the, of public view. No decision about the outcome has been made. In fact, all of you have been told when the meeting will be, when we will discuss the outcome of the process. So everything is out. It is in the open. It is, you know, it's in public. And I understand that some people may not like the process. I understand some people might not like the result, but it's all out, and it's open, and it's public, and that, you know, that's the way that this board functions. Nothing is being hid.
And I need to respond to that by saying, yes, you have every right to do what you've done. There's nothing illegal about it. I applaud RFPs. I applaud trying to get the best value for our money. I am appalled by the fact that you guys did this in secret without consulting current school board members. Appalled.
I'd also like to add that the date has already been chosen. I can't prove it, but I would guarantee that the six of you knew before you came here tonight what that date would be, and you were all able to be in attendance. It may be a night that the other three of us can't attend because we just found out about it. I don't see how that's doing things in the open and above board.
All right, here are no other questions or comments. We're going to close that portion. We got one more.
Hi, my name is Deborah Delano Brenner, and I actually attended the school district. I'm a Plymouth White Marsh, 1992 graduate, and I actually have been a volunteer in the Colonial School District for 11 years. I come to the school on Wednesdays all day. I've been at White Marsh Elementary, and I've served on the Distinguished Grad Committee for three years and on the West Gym Committee. And I guess as I'm sitting here, I couldn't sit anymore, I had to stand up and speak because I have had the honor of being part of so many great things with the school board and seeing the beautiful relationship between the school board and before, previously with Dr. Gora Detzer. Every time I attended a meeting, I actually walked out and I would say, "Oh, my gosh, my mom had taught in this district for 30 years." And I would call her on the phone, and I would say, "It feels like such a family when I'm in these meetings. Everyone feels so close, and it feels like they all just make these decisions together." And as I sit here, I really could almost cry because I have three children in this district, 10th grade, 7th grade, and 4th grade, and I have a long time here, and I've given up a lot of my time as well. And anytime decisions are made, it's not a decision that one group makes and not another group. And I could cry for the people that have been on this board for all of these years, that have given countless hours. This is a volunteer position. Nobody here is getting paid to do this. And obviously, I know that you guys are not getting paid to come on, to be on this board. But I think of like building a house, and all the time that someone takes to build a house, and you design it, and you put all the pieces together, and then it feels like, almost like someone's just coming onto the house and slashing it or burning it on fire. And it doesn't feel good, as I'm sitting here, as somebody who is a parent in this district, as somebody who's a volunteer. These amazing people that have been on this district, and I know Leslie as well, and obviously Felix have been on, on the board prior to this and have given countless hours, but I'm sitting here seeing this, and it's really hurtful and upsetting to me that all the hours that have been spent, that, I mean, Susan tonight is sitting here, and she's being told she's no longer president anymore. I can't even imagine if I were sitting behind in her chair, how I would feel tonight after all that she's done. And the district is the best it's been. I literally spend countless hours a week going on, researching different things, and I have to tell you, our district, I taught in the different East Town School District, which was also an outstanding district. This district is the upcoming district. As Greg Stokes said when he came up here, people are moving here into one-bedroom places. They're doing whatever they can to get in here. And I feel like there's so many changes that have occurred. We have a wonderful new superintendent that I have had the honor to be on two committees with so far. And we also have a new athletic director, and we also have a new financial person that was just hired in November. I get that your wife just talked about, and I understand that, you know, there's a book, Who Moved the Cheese?, and change, and change is hard. I agree on that. And I'm not saying that change isn't good. Change can be good. But I think it has to be done. This can't, you can't start off in a way where people are butting heads and clashing. This does not feel good for people that are sitting out here as parents who love our children, who care more than anything, and for all the time that's been invested, we can't just say, "Oh, let's forget about that and just change everything up in one night in a meeting." So that's all I'm going to say, but I had to voice my opinion.
I also go to Plymouth White Marsh, and I, I don't know as much about the situation, but I just feel like even though it is six versus three, when most of the parents, like, voice their opinions with the three, there should be more consideration about holding off on the decision rather than going through with it right away, just so maybe you can hear more voices on it. Because even though it's six versus three, I feel like a lot of the people here sided with the three. And then I also feel like it's not really fair to say there's an end of discussion because, in my opinion, like, if you have to end the discussion, like, you must know that it's leaning toward the other way, almost. So, yeah.
Got here a motion to adjourn. Got a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.